So the February ninth Planning Commission meeting. Oh, we'll start here. Let's call this meeting to order, the February ninth Planning Commission meeting for the city of Cupertino. So let's do a roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Let's start with Commissioner Saxena. Commissioner Capio.
Yeah, I.
Commissioner Scharf.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Present.
And Commissioner Modi Patla is absent at this time.
On route. He'll be here. So very, very cool. All right. Well, uh, this meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and a recent executive order issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. Ordinarily, the Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. The governor's executive order has suspended these rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance, and the city has met all the applicable notice requirements. Members of the public may offer a public comment by email to planningcommission@cupertino.org prior to the close of the public comment period for each agenda item. Staff will share all such comments with the commission committee, subject to the timelines applicable to public comment, which is three minutes, and make them part of the record. So, so yeah. So staff, have we received any public comments on this item by email?
No, no comments have come in.
Okay. So, and then, um, any other thing else in oral communications? Anyone else with hands to raise? Now is the time to do that. I see we have a hand here. Lisa Warren.
Hello, and I just want to say congratulations to our new commissioners and wish all five of you a good year and beyond. Thank you.
That's it? Well, thank you.
That's it. Well, we'll see you next.
All right. No, thank you very much. Okay. So I guess we can move on to, um, our, I think we're skipping our first item, if that's correct. Is that correct? I just wanted to double check. That's going to be postponed, if that's correct.
Yes, that is correct. I just wanted to clarify that the clerk is at another conflicting meeting, and so this item has been postponed until the next meeting that you can make.
Okay, so we'll move on to the second item, which is ceremonial matters and presentations. Item number two is election of chair, vice chair, and committee appointments. Recommended action: elect a chair and vice chair of the Planning Commission, assign representatives to various committees, make a recommendation to the city council for Planning Commission representative to the ERC or Environmental Review Committee, and review the upcoming meeting calendar for 2021. So let's go to the staff report. Thank you.
Hi, uh, I actually created a short spreadsheet for the commission to help them, uh, figure out what boxes need to get filled in. Uh, and it is up to the commission to decide amongst themselves, um, and conduct the election and, uh, select the representatives. I'll be happy to share my screen whenever you are ready.
That sounds good. Let's review them, um, and maybe give, um, Commissioner, uh, give Mooney a chance to come back. So, uh, he's on route.
One second.
Oh, Mooney's there. Very, very cool.
I made it.
Welcome. All right, well, we're in good shape, then we can proceed, and let's take a look at what you have and then also determine who wants to do things.
Yes, so, uh, at this time, there is the, uh, chair and vice chair positions for the Planning Commission, um, the chair and representative to DRC, the representative and the alternatives to the ERC, the Housing Commission, and the Economic Development Committee, and then representatives to the mayor's monthly meetings. And, um, the Housing Commission and the EDC, those are just, um, traditionally, the Planning Commission has had a representative just attend the meetings. Uh, there is no obligation in the municipal code to have representatives from the Planning Commission there, so just wanted to, uh, point that out. But with that, uh, the white boxes are the ones, uh, you all need to fill in.
Yeah, and I think it's really important for folks to look at the days that you need to be available for each one of these committees, just to make sure you can attend those. So I think that's the critical one. I think somewhere in the morning, if you look at, uh, ERC and Housing Commission rep, I believe those are in the morning. And then, uh, you know, there are a few in the evening, which is DRC, Planning Commission, and the mayor's monthly meetings.
Uh, but DRC isn't the vice chair or the chair?
Oh, I did want to point that out. You have the, uh, Planning Commission vice chair does serve as the chair to the Design Review Committee. So we'll just need to be selecting an alternate for that committee. A second, a second commi- a commissioner and an alternate for that.
Okay, so I guess I think the first order of business at this point is to select a chair and see who's interested in it, and, uh, and then select a vice chair. So, anybody up for it?
I will nominate R. Wong to be chair.
Is there any discussion here? Okay, um, all right, uh, discussion. There's a second, uh, on the table. Anybody interested?
Well, I think you'll be a great, uh, chair. I think you served very well as, uh, the vice chair, uh, last year and before, before that. Uh, and, uh, uh, I am looking forward to having you lead this.
Okay, uh, any other comments from the other commissioners?
Yeah, I think so. Uh, probably you're more familiar than us because, uh, at least compared to me. So, uh, I would see that, uh, probably somebody who has been in the commission for, for some period of time.
Okay, any other comments? It's kind of awkward trying to run the meeting and being not even chair. I guess, um, I, I, I say thank you, um, I'm, I'm happy to serve, and I will be relying on all your help, uh, as everybody on the team. So, um, I guess if there's no other comments, uh, we'll put a call to vote, so. Okay, um, Beth, do the honors.
Okay, uh, I didn't catch who made the initial nomination?
I did.
Commissioner Scharf.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, thank you.
Mooney.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Commissioner Scharf?
Yes.
Commissioner Capio?
What?
Commissioner Modi Patla?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wong?
Do you abstain on your own vote, or do you?
You're going to abstain from your vote, yes.
I'll stand for my own vote, so I'll make sure.
No, you don't have to do that.
Okay, I just abstained, it's kind of weird. So thanks, so.
The motion carries, four zero one with Commissioner Wong abstaining.
Uh, okay, I guess the next order of business is to nominate a vice chair. Um, any nominations?
I nominate Steven Scharf as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, any discussions on the candidate? Or any discussions from anybody else? I'll start by, oh, go ahead, someone's saying.
Yeah, I'll just say that, uh, uh, Steven Scharf has served us well over the past four years. His commitment to, uh, hearing the residents and, uh, listening to them and then coming up with solutions which satisfy, um, many of the stakeholders, uh, was very obvious. So I'm really glad that we have people of experience stepping up to the Planning Commission and helping us take us, the city forward.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm willing to serve as vice chair.
Okay, any other comments from anyone else?
Or any other nominations?
Or any other nominations, yep, as well? I, I would say the same thing. I, I, I'm in awe of, uh, Commissioner Scharf and our, as our former mayor and as city council member, so I think brings a lot of experience, a lot of, uh, continuity and the history that's going to be needed as we come up with, as we see different types of, uh, planning issues and also address, uh, some of the housing concerns that we have going forward. So, so I, I wholeheartedly endorse, uh, Commissioner Scharf.
I, uh, I can, Chair Wong, can I step in for, for a moment here?
Yes, please do.
Yeah, we, we normally allow public comment on this item. I, I think as before we proceed much further, um, perhaps we should open the floor.
Oh, we should, yes, good point. Um, for the first item or the second, uh, the first nomination as well?
Uh, well, it's, it's listed as an item, a single item on the agenda, so that's just, uh, we can treat it that way.
Okay, let's treat it that way.
Okay, and but although I do defer to Beth, if you r-run public comment on this item in a certain fashion, uh, I, I defer to you.
Yeah, historically, we've had public comment after the election of the nomination of the chair, and then public comment after the nomination of the vice chair. Uh, the other, uh, appointments are by consensus, and those typically don't have any public comment time. I do want to say we only have one attendee, and there's nothing in the email boxes, and the one attendee does not have a hand raise.
Okay. Okay, so, um, let's take a step back, um, let's leave the nominations, uh, in play. Um, as, I guess, is there any more, any public comment outstanding on the appointment of the chair, and the voting of the chair? Hearing none, uh, let's carry on to the nomination for the vice chair. Um, nomination for the vice chair is in play. We have a motion, uh, from, a motion and a second, and we're in the middle of discussion. Um, let's do a vote if there's no, any other discussions. Um, Beth, please do the honors.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Modi Patla?
Yes.
Commissioner Capio?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Chair Wong?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Scharf?
Yes.
You didn't stay.
I'm the group.
Well, congratulations. So, okay, um, let's open up for public comment, see if there's any, uh, so thank you, thank you, Beth, sorry to interrupt you. Um, seeing if there's any public comment on the appointment of Vice Chair Scharf. And we have no written comments, so hearing no written comments, no oral comments, uh, let's move on to the other areas of the committees. So, can we blow that up a little bit? Is there a way to, uh, zoom in on there a little bit, so we can, oh, that's great.
So, uh, I'd like to win the DRC if that works for other folks.
Okay.
That's fine.
Anybody want to be an alternate?
Commission, if anyone.
Yeah, I, I, I can do evening stuff, mornings are tough for me, so, uh, I, I can be an alternate for DRC.
Commissioner Capio, would you like to bring back your Housing Commission experience as well?
Uh, I cannot attend the morning session, uh, for, so I will go for Economic Development Committee if this is.
Okay.
Why does it say 10:00 AM for, so that's in the morning, too?
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
Yeah, all of those are, the only one not in the morning is Design Review.
But it seems like it's a quarterly, uh, it's not, uh, it's not weekly.
Yeah.
Until at least.
Yes. Now, the house, Housing Commission meets in the morning? I, I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Yes, the Housing Commission meets quarterly in the morning, uh, on the second Thursday of the month.
Ah, okay. Well, yeah, that's, okay. I can do that if, um, or I'm open to other people doing it, but I'm willing to do Housing Commission.
Okay, so what do we have so far?
So I, uh, just so I'm clear, I heard that, uh, Commissioner Saxena wanted to be on the, uh, DRC. I'm just putting the names down as I heard them, and, uh, Commissioner Modi Patla wanted to be, um, on the DRC as, serve as the alternative for the DRC.
That's correct.
Wait, so, so why is my name in for DRC? Is that automatically the vice chair does that, or what?
Yes, that is right.
You chair the DRC as the vice chair?
Oh, I chair the DRC, okay.
Uh, one of the other things, uh, that I, I forgot to mention is usually the chair of the, uh, Planning Commission is, uh, recommended to serve on the Environmental Review Committee. Uh, but that is at the, uh, commission's, um, discretion, so I have not put that down yet. So I'll wait.
Yeah, if anybody's interested in that, I'm, I'm happy to, um, step aside on that as well, um, or I can take that as well. They don't meet a lot either, so that's the other thing.
Right.
Actually, not recently.
So I'm tentatively putting down Commissioner Wong here.
Thank you. Okay, sounds good. That's fine.
And then an alternate?
Yeah, you can put me alternate on that one.
Okay.
Okay.
So Commissioner Wong, I'm putting you down as the permanent, and I'm changing that from the italics to the non-italics.
Oh, that's what the italics mean? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, for the Housing Commission, I, I'm sorry, I'm, I might have missed that.
Oh, I was willing to do that unless someone else is dying to do it.
And then if we could have an alternate for that?
Since it's quarterly, I'll do, I'll be the alternate, this money.
And then for the Economic Development Committee, I have those dates, um, in case anybody's interested. There is actually one tomorrow. Um, that is, uh, February 10th. I think the next ones are May 12th, August 11th, and, uh, November 10th is my understanding. So if.
Who, who, who runs that committee? Is that someone from City Council, or what?
Um, there is a member from the City Council, a member from the planning, I can look it up, sorry, I don't have.
Our, um, our Economic Development Director Angela Sway, she runs the meeting. Um, the committee usually, uh, has members from the Chamber of Commerce, the council representatives, uh, Paul and Wei. And then we usually have a Planning Commissioner come, and I think that they have, um, a couple of members from the business community as well.
I'm happy to serve there if someone isn't able to. I can't make tomorrow's meeting, but if someone can, I'm happy to alternate with someone as well. So if someone's interested in that area, yeah.
Yeah, for tomorrow, I cannot make it. I can, I can volunteer for Economic Development Committee.
Oh, cool. Okay, then do that.
Yeah, no, but not for tomorrow.
Okay. Right. Anybody want to be the alternate? I can alternate, that should be fine, so I can make any, but the problem is none of the, none of us can make the, the first meeting tomorrow, so.
I can be the alternate for, uh, Economic Development.
Oh, cool, Vicker, perfect. Can you make tomorrow's meeting?
Uh, tomorrow's, I don't think I can. Let me just confirm my calendar, but, uh, yeah, tomorrow, no, uh, 10:00 AM, how long will it last? I have a meeting at 10:30, so I can make it for half an hour.
It is my understanding that it should end by 11:00 AM.
Okay, so I can just be there for the first half an hour, so not after that.
Better than nothing, so, perfect.
Fine, I suppose.
Commissioner Saxena, I'll forward you the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, there's, next is the mayor's monthly meeting, and, um, I, well, the date's, it's starting out from March. So we do have two, um, meetings already for this month, and I believe the next one is tomorrow, and Commissioner Saxena is listed as going to that one. It's at 5:00 PM.
Hmm, yeah.
On the second Wednesday of the month. So we just.
I can do March 10th, that's fine. I'll put that onto my calendar.
For April?
Uh, March 10th is fine, April's fine too, if you want.
Yeah, I, I'll do the April, so we can.
All right, I'll do May, even though, yeah, I can't stand meeting with the mayor. I'm teasing.
You?
We love your, we love your right sense of humor. Cool, I guess we just rotate out, see if anyone else needs to, we are missing.
Yeah, we, we should rotate.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I dread it, I guess 11th, I'm just going to have to.
So, uh, if it goes on rotation, this is what I have for the year, just.
Okay. Lucky Capil and Saxena.
Those are previous terms. These are new terms, you'll be okay. Okay, wow, super efficient, thank you, everybody. Uh, anything else we're missing, Pugh?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Beth, do you have anything that I might have missed?
What's the line item that says second Wednesday? Oh, okay, like.
That, that's just, yeah.
I have, um, I have all my boxes as well. Um, the Housing Commission is also meeting this week on Thursday at 9:00 AM. This, again, is not compulsory that you attend, but, uh, Commissioner Scharf, if you would like to attend, I will forward you the agenda.
Yeah, I can attend.
So I guess we have all of this. I'm going to stop my sharing here, and thank you.
So, I, I have one to ask, to the staff, right, so for these meetings, as we agree, uh, you know, the primary attendees and all that stuff, it'd be nice if you can get the calendar invites, you know, sent to the city calendar, uh, right? So that we, you know, we know, right? I'm kind of a slave to my calendar, so if something is not on my calendar, I don't show up.
It is my understanding.
So these can all be put on our.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I had a big challenge with Outlook, you know, uh, on the bike commission. Something was wrong with my name, so I could never get any of these meetings on, on my calendar, so hopefully that's not the case here.
Uh, we can send out, um, reminders to you, I mean, for the meetings, for the EDC and for the ERC, you will get agendas and you will get invites to those.
Yeah.
Um, and, right, and if you can put that on your calendar, that would be awesome, but as long as we're virtual, you will get the Zoom meeting, uh, reminder.
Right, I think what we're asking is, um, can somebody on city staff put them on our calendars? Or do we need to do that ourselves?
Uh, usually the commission does do it themselves, but, uh, we can try to find a way to see if, um, that can work, um, and see. It will also impact, if I were to send the invite out, it'll also be, show up on my calendar, but I will try to, we'll, we'll try to find some sort of a solution if we can. We will definitely try to facilitate that. I can, I can promise you that.
Yeah, no, thank you, that would help a ton, so.
Yep.
Calendar with a link to the, the Zoom, Zoom link and all that, because, uh, that's a big, big challenge, right, so like.
Yeah, the Zoom link will go out to your email.
Okay.
Right, it's just, you know, searching for the Zoom link in the email is sometimes, you know, difficult. It's better if it's actually in our Outlook calendar.
Calendar.
But, anyway.
Yeah, if you can do that, um, I'll work with, I'll work with, uh, Beth and Pugh to figure out a way to do that, so.
I can also check in with the IT division to see what we can do.
Yeah, it could just be a group, and, uh, we'll set you up in the groups, so, yeah. Okay. All right, um, I guess with that, we will move on to item number three, which we will have to, I believe, postpone, is that correct?
Yes, we don't have a quorum of attendees to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
See if we can do that by proxy, if that's okay. All right, sounds good. Okay. Um, with that, um, we will move on to the public hearing aspect of this, that's correct. Or did I, did I jump the gun on the oral communications? I think we did that earlier, is that correct? Yes, I think we did. Okay, no written communications.
Minutes already, or no?
Um, we can approve the minutes because that requires Commissioner Fung, uh, former Commissioner Fung and former Commissioner, um, Takahashi to be on to do that, for a previous meeting.
Oh, so can we, can they ever be approved then, or?
They'll be done by proxy. They'll be done by proxy.
Okay.
So, we're in that interesting gap transition period. Um, so with that, let's move on to item number four, our public hearing. Um, hillside exception application to consider allowing the construction of an 864 square foot deck expansion on slopes greater than 30% to an existing single-family residence. Application number EXC 2020 dash 007, applicant Kurt Klein in the Reify, I hope it's pronounced correctly, Reify Residence on 22637 San Juan Road. Recommended action, that is, the Planning Commission adopt the proposed draft resolution, define the proposed project exempt from CEQA, and to approve the hillside exemption. And so with that, let's turn it over to Pugh and John.
Hi, good evening. I, I'd like to introduce, uh, John Martier, Senior Planner, who will take you through the staff report. Welcome, John.
Okay, Pugh. Uh, yes, hi, uh, John Martier, Senior Planner of the, with the Community Development Department, and I'm going to be here to present, uh, this project. Uh, should be a pretty quick presentation. Um, let me see, can everyone see my slide?
Yes.
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 All right, so hillside exception, uh, 2020 dash 007, this is for, um.
Woo-hoo, we're in 169 finally, awesome.
Okay, so the project title is hillside exception application to consider allowing the construction of an 864 square foot deck expansion on slopes greater than 30% to existing hillside residence. So a little bit about the project site, uh, this, the project is located on a approximately 16,000 square foot parcel within the RHS 30 zone. This is residential hillside, uh, zone that where minimum lot size are 30,000 square feet. Um, the existing home is about 4,300 square feet. Um, the home is built in 1970 with a major remodel, uh, completed in 2011. Uh, as you can see from the photo, the, uh, surrounding land uses are pretty much single-family residential with, uh, RHS, um, uh, zoning to the north, south, and west, and R110 to the east. So the proposed project is essentially just adding the 862 square foot deck extension to an existing deck and pool along the rear facade of the home. Uh, the deck will be constructed out of epay wood, artificial grass in the middle, and surrounded by cable wiring, wire railing approximately three and a half feet tall, uh, with some uplighting, um, shining on the home. Um, excuse me, not shining on the home, I apologize. Um, the support for the, um, for the structural, the structural columns. And with this, um, proposed project, there's no anticipated grading or tree removals as part of the scope. Um, the, the engineering behind this project has been reviewed by our, our consultant, uh, geotechnical engineer, and, um, he has given, um, his recommendations that are embedded within the condition of approval and general approval of the project as designed thus far. So this is a, a very nice, uh, 3D modeling or 3D, uh, view of the, um, of the proposed project, what you see in light brown is pretty much what's going to be added. Uh, there are some stairs going down the hill, uh, just past where the deck will be. Um, everything else in white is pretty much existing. So hillside exception, so what does our, um, municipal say about hillside exceptions in the hills, within the hillside ordinance 1940? Essentially, it prohibits any structures or improvements over 500 square feet in an area on slope squared in 30%, unless an exception is granted. Uh, this can be done in other ways, too, if this is on a ridge, uh, on a prominent ridge line, which this, this property is not. Um, so one of the ways that we can grant the exception, or the Plan Commission can grant the exception, is, is to have in the findings that the project or property presents unique circumstances or hardships, um, that, that, in which the, the city may consider an exception if project is designed to minimize extent of the exception impacts on the surrounding hillside. So as an example, um, one of the things we always require as part of a hillside, uh, development, um, which, um, are on steeper slopes is to show some type of, 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 of analysis where, uh, what areas of the parcel would have slopes that are 30% or greater. So, um, in this, um, this image, you can see the, um, area that is, um, in the dash red lines is where, is pretty much the scope area, area of the, uh, of the addition of the, of the deck. And the area that is highlighted in blue is the area which is, uh, of the parcel which is, has, uh, slopes over the, that are over 30% grade. So essentially, uh, any, pretty much any part of the parcel that's existing right now outside of the house is, um, on a 30% slope. So any addition on this property, um, that's over 500 square feet would require, um, a hillside exception. So what we have in this case is a deck that's probably the most optimal area which to have the least amount of disturbance on the hillside. So you have a, a deck that's adjacent to existing development on site. Um, anything that is further down slope will require further grading, um, further, um, potential destruction of, of the hillside, and as you can see, there are a few trees down slope as well. So this is per staff's, um, analysis, the optimal, most optimal portion of the house, and pretty much the only portion of the house that makes sense to have a, a deck. Uh, again, right next to an existing home, right next to existing deck and pool. So, um, this project is exempt from CEQA under section 15303, which applies to new construction or conversion of small facilities or structures, including single-family residence and accessory structures such as patios, swimming pools. And none of the exceptions to the categorical exemptions in CEQA guidelines, section 15300.2, apply. So it's staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopt the proposed draft, draft resolution to, one, find the proposed projects exempt from CEQA, and two, approve the hillside exception. Um, just as you're probably already aware, the applicant is in attendance, and so is the architect. And so any question about design, I'm sure they can, you know, happen to answer. Thanks, Adam. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Um, I don't think anybody else has any. So. Okay. So to the commission, any questions specific to staff?
So I had a bunch, yeah, I'm, I had a bunch of questions. Uh, I think the first question had to do with the fact that this is RHS thirty, right? But the lot, I think, was fifteen thousand. So should you just give a little bit of history on how that came along? Or if you know of that? I mean, that's not something which.
I could probably guess, you know, it just, it just my knowledge of the past seven years and looking at various developments on the hillsides. Uh, many of these um, of these hillside parcels were done, you know, before nineteen twenty. So before we had any RHS, any and whatnot. In fact, you find um, very few subdivisions in the hillsides because requirements are so um, they require such large properties to be subdivided. So pretty much.
Okay. So let's start with grandfathered in.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Uh, the second question was more of for my education. Um, you have this a fifth, uh, uh, five hundred square feet uh, limit on anything. Now, like, what if you make two decks which are like four ninety-nine feet? Would that still bypass the exception or is that some total of something? I mean, you could just separate them by two feet and like, they're two separate structures. So, so I, what I'm coming to, what is the motivation behind the restriction and uh, what, how does the staff typically look at that as a spirit of the limitation and constraints?
Sure. I mean, if the applicant came in and says, I'm building a deck that's four hundred ninety-eight square feet on a slope that's thirty percent, they don't need an exception. That's, it really, yeah, I mean, I, I see where you go with.
We've got, we've got a koi pond in between two feet and we'll put another four hundred ninety-eight.
Yeah, I mean, are they come, come a year later and say, oh, I want to do another deck?
Yeah. What I wanted to understand was the spirit behind the, 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 the constraint we have put a five hundred square foot on, I think. And it's more from my education than anything else.
Sure. You know, I, I, I could only guess as to why the five hundred square feet was done. I mean, this is, that's a standard that's been around since, um, I don't know if you, you would know, um, you know, thirty, thirty years ago was when the RHS ordinance came about.
Even, even before that, uh, there was an ordinance before then. So since the seventies, at least.
Okay. And it's primarily to uh, not by default, provide permission to build big houses on, or big structures on uh, steep slopes.
Sure. And I, yeah, I mean, as, those types of standards are, you know, I, I guess, I guess there are more incentives not to build homes on the steep slopes as well.
Okay.
One of the things about the RHS ordinance is that the steeper the, the, the average slope of the property, the smaller your house can be. So that's, that's one of the things about, you know, if, if and when we come back with a hillside exception for actual house, that, that will be made abundantly clear um, in the presentation as to methodology behind calculating the square footage, the allowed square footage F A R of a home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, I had one more question, but I can wait for other folks to, if they have any.
Just to underline, Commissioner Capil, any questions or comments?
Yeah, just wondering based on the description given thus far, uh, what is the relationship of a thirty percent slope to the five hundred square feet? Is there some kind of a structural reason for that? Or is that uh, just a kind of a uh, line item in your history basically? Uh, uh, so do you have a structural engineer here or some architect here? Who can answer this? Basically, I'm just wondering that if you have a fifteen percent slope or a forty, fifty percent slope, would this five hundred square foot would change?
Um, if it's under, if, if the slope is under, let's say it's twenty-seven percent, um, and you're building something that's five hundred square feet, you wouldn't need an exception. Um, thirty percent slope, and again, Pew, uh, please, um, you know, please, please jump in, but I think the thirty percent slope is something that's standard, not just the Cupertino, but also Los Gatos, on Southus Hills, Saratoga as well.
So I, I just wanted to um, just um, mention this, that the thirty percent slope kind of came, was developed uh, with input from, you know, structural engineers and other engineers that work in the hillside areas, the geotechnical engineers. That was developed when the ordinance was developed back in, you know, the seventies or even. And then what was developed in the seventies was slowly incorporated into the city's current RHS ordinance. And um, so that was developed with, uh, you know, expert opinions from the uh, geotechnical engineers at that time. And that is a line item in our ordinance that we have to comply with. So anytime somebody comes in with development over five hundred square feet on a slope that's greater than thirty percent, that's when uh, they have to apply for hillside exception. But that does not mean that if they come in with a development on a slope, maybe twenty-seven percent, and it is, you know, five hundred square feet, that they do not need geotechnical investigation. They do need the geotechnical investigation, but that might happen uh, with their building permit review. That doesn't necessarily need a hillside exception. So I did.
Yeah, I, I, I actually, my question was specifically this uh, uh, line item you said is before nineteen twenty or whatever, uh, and the, the material uh, type and everything was taken into account for the structural uh, investigation was based on the material available at that time, right? Uh, when this regulation was put in force, now after ninety years, we are, we are still following the same regulation. I mean, uh, where the things have changed, how the, whatever the uh, five hundred square foot could be built using a, some kind of a, a very lightweight material. And uh, that regulation may not uh, uh, hold anymore. So, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, you know. If I could try to attempt to answer, you know, I, again, I, I don't know the, the actual history from nineteen seventy as, as to the reason why. I mean, it's not just about structural engineering. It's, it's the limitation of the size as much as to discourage folks as much as possible and to rethink about the placement of their homes on steep hillsides. You know, the, you know, if you look at all the hillside ordinances on the West Valley, um, you know, they, they all want to take in consideration the views from the valley floor of, of structures looking into the hills. So as an example, we have certain design elements in the, in the chapter that, that discuss limitations on colors. Even this project has a condition of approval that limits the reflectivity value of the colors used. So for example, this guy couldn't paint, the property owner couldn't paint his house clear yellow, right? Because it's got such a high reflectivity that someone looking up from above road in the hillside would see this big bright yellow home. You know, we want to have natural colors and whatnot. So you know, it's, it's not so much about engineering and I, I understand your, uh, your question, Commissioner Capil. It's mostly about discouraging as much as possible um, th- these massive homes on steep hillsides. And you know, again, we do give certain findings where a developer, you know, if, if they're really just stuck saying, hey, I just have, I have a, I'm an old grandfather-in-law and all I can do is build on, on these steep slopes like, like, like this property owner. Then we can give an exception to, to um, a project like, at least support an exception for a project like this that has pretty minimal impacts of grading and such.
Any other questions from, let's go to Commissioner, uh, Marapati?
Yeah, so um, just uh, I, I, I went to the materials. So it's, it looked to me, you know, pretty straightforward in terms of, you know, uh, things that's being asked and, you know, and setbacks and all that stuff, right? So I, I didn't see any exceptions, you know, being requested rather than, you know, it's on the slope, right? So it's more of a question to the staff, like, you know, what's the number that we would have said, you know, no? Like, you know, I know the uh, resident is asking, you know, eight hundred, and it's aligning very well with, you know, existing deck and all that. What if the resident asked, you know, I want a two thousand square foot deck, right? So is that a number that you would have come back and said, no, no, or I'm just trying to understand?
Well, you know, there really isn't a, a threshold where you can say no, yes, and no. It's really, I'm done on case-by-case basis. You know, one of the things that um, staff was supportive about this project was the minimal amount of grading and the least amount of tree removals as well.
Yeah. I mean, th- th- those are all very positive, right? So I, I, I went to the details and even the neighbors, seems like, you know, no neighbors, you know, raised any concerns and the, the notifications went out. So, so, so everything looks good. From my part of, you know, it's, it's a no-brainer.
Uh, Commissioner Sharp?
Um, yeah, I read the material before the meeting as well. And, you know, I guess what struck me with this compared to some of the other deck issue I dealt, I've dealt with on city councils, no, no, um, no neighbors objected to this. So I do trust the staff recommendation. Um, the only question I had not, was not really, what if someone came with a three thousand square foot deck? It's, you know, if you don't need an exception for under five hundred square feet, what stops someone from doing a four ninety-eight this year and then in two more years say, hey, I'm going to do another four ninety-eight? Is there any, anything that stops that or is that just uh, up to? Um, I mean, they don't need an exception to do something like that, do they? To do sequential additions?
No, the ordinance does not have that.
Yeah. Um, yeah, that, that was on, my only concern, not with this project, but just in general, that people could get around this uh, in clever ways. But yeah, I have no objections to this.
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, we haven't seen many decks that come in at four ninety-eight. Usually when people come in with decks, they come in with their whole plan. They have a vision for it. So we don't usually see that happening.
Okay, thank you. I'm done.
That's your Commissioner Sharp. Um, I was gonna say, I, I, I did go out there. I, I stood on Stevens Canyon just to see what that impact would be. I sat on San Lucia as well and uh, sat on San Juan. Um, I'd say, given that there are no um, neighborhood complaints, um, and given the fact that the, the trees, the existing trees are, are there, preserved, um, it does look like a good spot for the deck. Um, the Ipe wood that's being uh, placed on there, I think, uh, is, is also very light, uh, should actually help as well. Um, is there any drainage kind of specific requirements that you guys have for that deck being there? Does that change any drainage?
Yeah, you know, Public Works has conditioned the project as well. And so they, they'll be looking at that.
Okay, cool. All right. Well, with that, um, I, I have no other questions. I, I think, uh, uh, we've got the staff recommendation there. Is there anything, uh, any comment from the uh, landowner or applicant that we should ask for?
Ray, there, there is one person with their hand raised from the public.
Ah, excellent. Yeah, we get to that. Um, we'll get to that as well. Um, do we, and from, from a uh, question of procedure, do we actually, we finish our discussion here. We haven't made a nomination or vote. Um, does the applicant get a chance to speak first or do we go to public comment? I think the applicant speaks first and public comment. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Seth's nodding his head. All right, cool. All right, let's do that. Um, so any comments from the applicant? You don't have to say anything. Yeah, you could be done.
Well, we'd thank you for your consideration.
Commissioner Wang, I just wanted to say that, uh, the owners have employed a, a civil, uh, engineering firm to uh, both analyze grading and drainage and then, and we're, we're going to provide uh, the calculations um, uh, for those on our supplemental.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just worried about the water flow to the folks on the other side. So that's it.
Sure. Right.
Okay. All right. With that, that's open to public comment. Um, we have a hand raised. I believe it's Lisa Warren. Please join us. You have three minutes and you'll see a counter uh, that will go on as well. Oh no, Lisa, are you there? Okay, Lisa, we can't hear you, but uh, let's try you again.
There, there wasn't, there was not an ability for me to unmute. I had to lower my hand and raise it again, just FYI, if there's an issue with that.
No problem. Welcome.
Hi, thanks. So I, I have a question related to Dark Sky. Because I had looked at the plans and I hadn't noticed, and I didn't see in the slide deck from John. But John, you did mention uplighting. And given the Dark Sky proposed ordinance, it, I'm interested in knowing what that Dark Sky would say about whatever uplighting is being proposed and possibly approved tonight without talking about it. Because I think it's reasonable, knowing the support for Dark Sky, that since this is a, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult. I just, it seems reasonable to request that the applicant follow the Dark Sky regulations as they are anticipated to be adopted. And because it's so close in time and that could have been adopted, you know, previously and it hasn't yet. Um, I, I, I just think it's reasonable to ask them to comply with that if what is being proposed would not be allowed. Because if, if, and if neighbors weren't identified, you know, with lighting, the lighting may be something that they're not, I don't know. So John, is there really uplighting? And is it a problem with the proposed ordinance, even if it's not now? That's, it's just something I'm asking you to think about or just at least answer. Um, and I, I'm not trying to be a problem for you, Mr. Rifi. I'm, it's just, and then I think the, the picture behind you is kind of cool, but that's not going to show if you got uplights all over the place. So. I mean, I, I know you can't enforce something that's not already in place, but I think it's reasonable. Uh, I mean, I was asked to do that in my little flat lot to do things that weren't really required yet. And I, and I did them. Cost me more money. Maybe I wouldn't have done them, but I did. So just thought.
I, i- if I may, I, I, I did miss, I did misspeak during the presentation. I thought I corrected myself. Uh, they're actually downlit. And I can, you know, if you, if you want, I can share the, the specs and the light right now. They're, as they're part of the, of the attachment.
Okay. Yeah. I don't understand. Because if, if there's something that would, if even if they're downlit and they wouldn't be quote-unquote allowed, Dark Sky, it's worth asking.
Sure.
Thank you.
Lisa, thanks for your comments. And uh, I'm seeing if there's no other comments. Uh, any written comments or emailed comments, Ken? Okay.
No, there's nothing in our, in our mailbox at this time.
Okay. With that, we'll go into deliberation by the planning commission. Um, and uh, yeah, we'll go down. Commissioners, any thoughts, any comments? Any questions for staff in addition to this? Okay, um, I, I would just say that, uh, I, I think the, the staff recommendations make sense. Um, and uh, I, I'm in favor of, of approving this. I don't know how everyone else is. I'm, I'm happy to make a motion. Uh, if there's a motion that someone wants to make, feel free as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the ordinance, uh, the proposal as presented by the staff.
I second it.
Okay, and that would be find the proposed project exempt from CEQA and approve the hillside exemption, EXC twenty twenty dash oh oh seven. Okay? So that's the motion. All right. Do you have a second?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, so Moni, we have a second. All right. Uh, any specific deliberations, any comments? Okay.
Yeah, so I, I have to make.
Commissioner Capil, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so many, um, I think commissioners have pointed out four ninety-eight versus five hundred thing. And uh, uh, besides this proposal, uh, what is needed for that to be a, a uh, uh, not to happen in future in the sense that somebody can get around, right? This is a workaround of the current proposal and you just get four ninety-eight and you just get after a year four ninety-eight. So uh, how, how, how do you lump this whole?
So, uh, Commissioner Capil, I would say that, that is not germane to this current discussion, but we can discuss that in, in the future. Um, there are a lot, number of ordinances where you can actually get to the limit and then be done. Um, but that's why there are rules and the permissions. Um, this applicant has uh, come in with the specific exception to go uh, past that. But I do understand your sentiment there. Um, and I would ask staff to answer that question once we get past this item. If that's okay.
So if I, if I may comment, I'd, I'd like to thank the resident, you know, and the applicant for submitting an obligation that didn't require a lot of exceptions. Like, to me, you know, it looked, you know, straightforward, right? There is no um, tree removals and, you know, there is no you know, setback, exceptions, and those kind of things. So I really appreciate, you know, the resident and the applicant, you know, taking care of those things. Otherwise, it would have made it difficult, right? If there are a lot of exceptions and, you know, there are objections from the neighbors, you know, that would have made our job very difficult. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Thank you. I appreciate your.
Thank you, I appreciate your.
Okay, yeah, I would, I would say, I, I think staff put a lot of time into this, so thank you on the staff end. And Beth, let's do the honors and take a vote.
Okay. Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Commissioner Madupati?
Yes.
Commissioner Capil?
Ah, yes.
Vice Chair Scher?
Aye.
And Chair Wong?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, well, congratulations, good luck with your deck and happy building.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for being here, so. Okay, with that, that is our last item on the agenda. I think our next item is any kind of commission reports. But before we do that, I just want to make sure everybody's names are being pronounced correctly, so, and before we do that. Mine's pronounced Wong, just so everybody knows, and then I'll pass it on to, say that everyone's first names correctly, Vikram, Sanjeev, Moni and of course Stephen, so.
Okay.
So Vikram, how do you pronounce your last name?
Saxena.
Saxena, okay, cool, we'll get that right, all right. Um, Moni?
Madipatla.
Madipatla, okay, I've been butchering that, Sanjeev.
As it's written, right?
Madipatla, okay, and Sanjeev, Commissioner?
Ah, Kapel.
Kapel, okay, all right, and Stephen?
It's Scharf, the C is silent, so it's not Scar for sure for any of the many things I've been called in the last sixty-four years. It's just Scharf, thank you.
Very, very cool, all right, good, we've got that down, so everybody's on the same footing and that would be good for us all to do that. Okay, any commission reports, so. I think we all started, so there's nothing on our end, welcome, congratulations, everybody, and then any other open items?
No, but I mean, I'm perfectly fine, you know, calling Moni, so my first name is long as well, so I kept it purposefully, you know, small, Moni, so make it easy on others.
Okay, well, thank you, so, okay, if there's no further items, I would like to adjourn the February ninth City Cupertino Planning Commission meeting in record time. Congratulations, everybody.
Wow.
All right, okay, well, this is it, thank you, everybody, have a wonderful week, see you at the next meeting.